I'll turn that mic on. Is Kelly there?
Whenever you're ready, sir.
Okay. We're going to call this special meeting to order for December 26th. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Supervisor Zaragosa? Supervisor Long?
Kelly, you there?
Are you here? Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Foye?
Here. We'll do the pledge of allegiance real quick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Powers, agenda review.
Thank you, Chair Foye. One item, item 10, Resource Management Agency Environmental Health. Adoption of an emergency ordinance to establish a local unincorporated area debris removal program. Authorization for implementation of California Office of Emergency Services debris removal program for fire damaged properties in Ventura County. And authorization for the county executive officer to execute agreements necessary for initial implementation of the OES debris removal program. A board letter and an emergency ordinance have been submitted. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept? Gend, does anybody have any other things?
Salute.
Second.
And we'll vote, and then Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have public comments, and we have a... Mr. Pearson? Come on down. Five minutes, please.
Good morning. Well, I'm back. It's been a while. There's a few things that were stated in the last meeting that really weren't as good as they could be. There's some atrocities that have been done to me, and I'm still here looking for somebody to apologize to me. It's been a while. We're in December now, and I still haven't gotten any apologies. The District Attorney's Office accused the innocent man of horrendous charges before having the evidence to prove it. The District Attorney's Office has caused shame and disgrace to themselves as it relates to Mr. Pearson. They have lost their case against Mr. Pearson. Mr. Pearson believes that our government and judicial system in California could be so much better than this. It's no wonder the police and divisions of law enforcement get such a negative response from communities they serve and they say they protect. But that in no way diminishes the government's responsibility, and it's not acceptable to treat great citizens like Mr. Pearson less than human. It's not acceptable for a police officer to ask a citizen for the truth and then after doing so, let that citizen get put in jail for it. Mr. Pearson is the truth and a wonderful man. He was a firefighter and an EMT for various agencies. Maybe you guys could have used me on the recent Thomas Fire, but instead wanted to try to put me in prison. BS. He completed training to be a police officer with the city of Ventura Police Department, and still donates to the Anex Office at the Ventura Mall, although it looks like that mall, that Anex Office is now closed. Mr. Pearson played professional football and was awarded Best Offensive back in 91. He was a Boy Scout in his formidable years and never ditched a day of school in his life. Just two months prior to his September 14th accusations and subsequent arrests, one week later, Mr. Pearson was himself a selected juror for a case in Ventura, serving and doing his civil duty and service because he loves and cares about his community. It's not acceptable for a probation officer to ask for trust with a citizen just to himself be not trustworthy. Garcia, Mr. Garcia treated Mr. Pearson like garbage. Mr. Garcia, Ms. Laurel McWaters, Mr. Kelly Rourke, Ms. Tracy Khan, Mr. Commissioner Derek Malin. He's a very bad commissioner, by the way. He doesn't do a great job. He should lose his job. He does a bad job. Colleen Toy does a great job as a judge. Derek Malin, not even close. He doesn't do the right thing, and that's why I'm here saying it. Mr. Scott Peterson in the DA's office, he's a joke. And Mr. Gregory Totten. You all have adulterated the law, and you could have done your jobs better but chose not to do so. These actions of the listed agencies should never have had the opportunity to have been taken and annulled. Gregory D. Totten and all the listed department agencies in this complaint should want to tender their resignations effective immediately. Mr. Totten, ladies and gentlemen of this body of government, we came dangerously close to sending an innocent man to prison, but yet damage was done to Mr. Pearson's family, public image, and reputation and projected financial earnings for the future. The fact that the Ventura County District Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Department, and other agencies listed reacted emotionally to the complaints of a citizen who tries to circumvent the truth and reality is hardly understandable. But leaders are required to have patience beyond human limits. The kind of action that was taken against Mr. Pearson should only be exercised after all other avenues have been exhausted and the strictest standards of proof have been met. By a rush to judgment and casting Mr. Pearson aside so quickly and with malice upon Mr. Pearson's integrity and positive reputation, all listed agencies and individuals acting on those agencies' behalf have effectively lowered those standards, and that was a profound mistake. Mr. Pearson hopes all persons responsible are not in a position to make these mistakes again. We have a community to heal today, and all of us play a vital role in that healing process.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you coming in. All right. We'll move to board comments. Anybody have any comments? Yes, sir.
Just one. I just wanted to pass on to staff getting a lot of questions from community members I don't have the answers to, and I know everybody's trying to get them out there, about debris removal. And just the more we can get, the one question that I'm really struggling with people are asking is, does debris removal include the removal of burnt vegetation on a property, and how extensive is that burnt vegetation? If somebody can get me that answer, for example, a tree that's been burned down and there's got the burnt out stump, are they going to remove that stump, or the residents need to start thinking about that? That's the kind of stuff that is sort of rising now to the occasion as we're a few weeks past the fire. The other comment is, of course, something that's been said a lot, just amazing job. It was the fastest fire we ever had. It was the fastest evacuation we ever had, and this is certainly the fastest that I think any local government's moved towards recovery. So my compliments to everybody there.
I agree. You good? Kelly, you good? Any comments?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for all your efforts. The local assistance centers have been really helpful for our residents, and I appreciate everyone's foresight in making sure that we have that information readily available. We are getting a lot of questions from our office, and we'll be forwarding it over to Matt Carroll and his group to make sure that we get those questions answered. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Just a thank you to the county leadership team here today, led by Matt. City leadership with Dan. CalOES has been just a great partner for us and FEMA as well. I just appreciate all the cooperation and leadership. Thank you.
Great. Okay. We'll move on to our regular agenda, which is receive a file and report regarding the declaration of local emergency. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Chair Foye. To get to that, we'll ask our fire chief, Mark Lorenzen, to come up and give us an update on the status. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Vice Chair Foye, members of the board. Mr. Powers, for the record, Mark Lorenzen, county fire chief. Just a quick update on the fire as it stands today. Almost 282,000 acres, 900 personnel still assigned, 88% contained, day 23. And as you all know, on December 4th, about 6:30, the fire started just north of Santa Paula. It was on a day that we already had anticipated high fire hazards, super, super strong Santa Ana winds. We had upstaffed. The fire unfortunately started, and fortunately for us, our fire ground managers recognized the potential and called for sheriff's personnel and OES to come to the command post so we could work jointly in addressing the issues. The fire grew just at a tremendous rate of spread. Fortunately, our, like I said, our fire ground commanders saw it, requested 70 strike teams of engines early on. This was in the first four hours of the fire. That's 350 fire engines. Truly amazing. And then also started preparing for the fire moving. Initially, they tried to hold it in Adams Canyon. It quickly escaped their threshold of control and was in Wheeler Canyon, and they were calling for evacuations of Ondalondo and Clearpoint and Upper Ojai. I remember seeing Sheriff Dean at the command post, and he looks at me and he says, hey, we just got a request to evacuate all of Upper Ojai. And he goes, can you make sure that's accurate? And I checked with Dustin Gardner, my incident commander. He said, that's accurate. And he says, okay, we're on it. And it was just, it was so powerful what ended up happening there at that command post. You don't see it everywhere where you have this cooperation and the relationships that occur where on the fly Kevin McGowan's folks out of OES were doing the evacuation warnings with the VC Alert, basically the reverse 911 system, and just anticipating where the fire was going, and coordinating with the sheriff, and then again with Ventura PD to actually accomplish what was just such a massive task of evacuating in advance of the fire. I've said it before, and I will say it again, we should be standing here actually looking at damage that's far in excess of the 1,000-plus structures that were destroyed. And it's a miracle... No, I'm not going to say it's a miracle because it was planning and professional efforts and cooperation that actually resulted in the, you know, no deaths as a result of lack of evacuations, with the exception of the one who had a vehicle accident on her way out of Wheeler Canyon. It was just an exceptional effort, and you guys should be proud of the cooperative efforts of all of your first responders here. So, that's the end of my report. Any questions?
No. I do want to say that we are proud of what you've accomplished, and if we're going to err on the air of making people leave early, I'd rather do that. I mean, there's no question. You guys, everybody did a tremendous job. And as I toured the areas up on the hills there and just, I mean, a lot of people put their lives at risk to protect those homes, and you saw homes that were saved that you wonder how they were saved. And I know you had a hard time with a lot of that, and I know some people had a hard time wondering, why would they let my home burn? But I think you have reasons why that happened too, don't you?
Oh, for sure. And it's triage. It's trying to do the greatest good, and when you have a home that's already involved, and it will take five or 10 fire engines to try and save it, and instead you can use those five or 10 engines to save 100 homes, you just, you move on and you do the best that you can. And you did. You truly had first responders that really hung it out there over the duration of the incident. It was truly amazing.
Yeah. That's great. Mike?
So, I find I can answer Supervisor Bennett's question, at least related to debris removal from the fire department's perspective. I'll let Chris Stevens talk about it as it relates to CalRecycle. But generally, the vegetation is left in place. It's the responsibility of the homeowner to remove any of the burnt vegetation on their property. The fire is right now actively engaged in what they call burn area suppression rehab, where they're going in, and there are truly 200 miles of dozer line that we put in into areas that all need to be repaired. Basically, they go in and they waterbar it. They'll drag brush over it to help with erosion, but as far as the burnt vegetation, that's going to be the private property owner's responsibility. Any other questions? Thank you.
I think we're good. Thank you, and again, thank you for the great, as you can call, success. Mr. Powers?
No question. Certainly compared up north. One note, too, I just want to add, the evacuation piece of it was extraordinary, led by the sheriff and Kevin, and, you know, years of training and structures being set up and education of the public. Sheriff, along with Ventura PD, just did an amazing job of evacuating 30,000 people, and fast, fast, because this fire was barreling down on them.
I just realize, not too long ago, we didn't have the reverse 911, the VC Alert, where we could call people on their homes and get them on their cell phones and tell them to evacuate. Just also think that what happened in Santa Rosa, so many people perished, and you just, I think our citizenry were more serious, I think, when it came time to evacuate because they saw what happened there. And with that, just really thankful, not only for our first responders, but also for the fact that they were reaching out to us from Northern California and giving us suggestions. And we, I think, are taking lessons from how they were able to respond, and I think we're better off for that, too.
Very much so. Thank you, Supervisor. I'm going to call Matt Carroll up in just a moment, but I do want to let you know, we're also, as your board may know, seeking a federal major disaster declaration, and there's a lot of work going on for that. And last Monday, there was a briefing put together by Kevin and OES involving multiple county departments and some of our economic development professionals, really outlining for the different FEMA folks the impact. We've heard about the lost structures, but also, you know, lost homes, maybe over 750 lost homes. Some had insurance, some didn't have enough insurance. Those who did, some did not have insurance. There were many renters. You can see, these are hillside homes, so maybe the people are more well off, but there was a lot of folks who were renters, who were underinsured, a lot of seniors who were underinsured. There were farmworker families as well. So there was a lot of vulnerable populations affected by this fire, and I think the team did a great job of sharing that to FEMA, as well as the business impact. This is obviously one of the busiest times of the year for our large and particularly small businesses, and so this is hitting them right at a time when it's most important to them, and they have, many of them had to close their businesses. That affected their businesses, affected their employees. So, as I say, there was a lot of good message, I think, shared with FEMA as to the true impact of the disaster here. So, with that, I'll call up Mr. Carroll to give us an update on the recovery efforts.
Good morning, Chair Foye, members of the board, and CEO Powers. Matt Carroll with the county CEO's office, and also on the phone with us today, I want to introduce Eric Lamero. He's the Acting Deputy Director of Response and Recovery from CalOES, who's been a phenomenal leader and partner with us. And they were going to be here on site, but we didn't want to ask them to travel on Christmas Eve to be here for the meeting, so they would have stepped up and done that, we know, if we had asked them. So, Eric, are you still on the line?
I am still on the line. It's a pleasure to be with you all this morning. I appreciate you allowing me to call into the meeting. Happy to address any questions you may have.
Right. And Eric can address some of those specific questions. Supervisor Bennett, if we're not able to, for the next three agenda items. So, this first agenda item is requesting your board receiving file the report, and we're going to talk a little bit about recovery just briefly here, but also to renew the local disaster declaration, as well as the public health disaster declaration, which is required every 14 days, and really led to the timing of this meeting. But it was fortuitous because CalOES was ready to come down and start the next level of recovery of debris removal, and it gave us the opportunity to present that to your board as well today. So, on the declaration renewal, it is 14 days on the public health renewal, but there is an executive order that was just issued for Northern California that allowed that to be suspended or to forego the renewal every 14 days. And we expect that shortly here, within the next days or weeks here for Ventura County, so that we'll be on that once every 30-day cycle as opposed to the everyday 14 cycle. So, that's why we started, we did the local DAC disaster renewal today as well, even though it wasn't due for two weeks, because we wanted to take advantage potentially and get on that 30-day cycle. So, that said, on the recovery side, there's been tremendous effort, I believe, if you're, as your board knows, so much so that we got a little bit ahead of ourselves, and that's why the fortuitousness of this meeting on the debris removal. As your board knows, we've had over half a dozen town halls. We've had at least a dozen various meetings of the task forces. We briefed your board last meeting on the five various components of the task forces, from debris removal to health and housing and finances, as well as watershed. Those teams have been working closely with the city, and we also have representatives of the city of Ojai and Fillmore and Santa Paula on those teams, as well as on the steering committee team as well. And so they've been fast at work getting debris removal programs in place, coordinating the various aspects. Today, we'd like to just walk you through three of the most active areas we're focused on right now, and that is the DTSC efforts on hazardous debris removal. And then we want to update your board on what happened at the LAC, the final numbers at the LAC, and the go-for strategy to continue serving those people that don't, in lack of not having the local assistance center. And then we also want to brief your board on the next preparatory phase. We talked about watershed assessment and the burn area, big, huge issue there with those hillsides bear right now. So, we're going to have first Chris come up and just brief you on Phase 1 debris removal, how we're doing on that, the counts, or Bill. And then we'll have Barry come up, and then Kevin McGowan in that order. And then Chris will come back with Bill for the next couple items on Phase 2 of the disaster removal. Right now, we're just going to brief your board on the hazardous removal of Phase 1. So, Bill?
Vice Chair Foye, board members, Mr. Powers, and Bill Strandman, the Environmental Health Division. On December 8th, Dr. Levin declared a local health emergency, which enabled us to submit requests through OES to get DTSC or the Department of Toxic from the state to come down and start what we call a Phase 1 survey. And what that did was, they brought down three teams, and we had EHD staff involved with each of those teams, and they went around and surveyed and inspected each of those properties where homes were damaged or structures were destroyed. They removed any obvious or visible hazardous waste that was on the property. They also identified or attempted to identify suspicious asbestos or potential sites where asbestos was located. And they went through and removed what they could with the asbestos, at least the large pieces, as well as the household hazardous waste. They started that effort last week, and as of Friday, they had inspected 400 properties. We have another team coming out tomorrow. They'll be working from Wednesday through Friday, and I don't know how long it's going to take to complete all of the damaged properties, but I think that first week was very successful with 400 properties. One thing they're trying to do when they come back after the holidays is perhaps bring more teams down with them, but that's still up in the air. If they do that, that would certainly increase their ability to go through these properties. So, that's a summary of the Phase 1 efforts.
Is there some list of what properties have been inspected and not inspected? I have property owners that are, they're not sure whether their property's been inspected for hazardous waste. Are they informed in any way? Are we informed in any way? How do we keep track of what's done and what's not done? Some people are asking me, has that phase been done yet?
Good question. And as of last week, we were working very closely with our IT group and CalFire. The inspections for the Phase 1 are based on the damage assessments that we received from CalFire and the other fire departments. Based on that information, the maps that we received from them, we put an overlay with all the APNs and use that as part of the Phase 1. What we're doing now is developing a spreadsheet or a database where residents can go in through the webpage that's been set up and identify what properties have been inspected for part of that Phase 1. As well as that system, we also post a yellow placard on each of those properties on a stake, and it indicates when the inspection was completed, if there was asbestos that was suspected, and it's signed off by one of our inspectors. So, that's located on each of those properties that have received those.
So, if they don't have a yellow placard, they haven't been inspected yet?
That's correct.
And they can go to venturacountyrecovers.org and see the list of the properties that have been...
We're working on that list right now.
That's not up yet.
That's not up yet.
Is that only going to be APN numbers? You're going to put an address on it?
No, it'll be searchable by address. A lot of people, I don't know my own APN, so it will be by address, yes.
Do you have an idea when that will be up?
We hope to have it up this week, yes. We have the structure all set up on Friday. It was just a matter of trying to put it together.
Is it primarily just asbestos that they're looking for?
They're looking at any household hazardous waste, propane tanks, any type of fuel tanks, gas tanks, pesticide containers. Now, many times with the fire, there won't be any contents left in those cans, so they're marking those as just regular solid waste, and those can be removed as part of the Phase 2 debris removal that we'll talk about shortly here.
All right. Okay. Well, Bill, I appreciate it. You're part of a great team here, and I heard you've been doing a tremendous job yourself, so personally, so thank you.
One other question for you, Bill. Railroad ties that are creosote soaked, are they considered hazardous waste?
That's a great question, and they are considered, they can be hazardous substances. I know some of the landfills will not take that, as well as some of the other debris we'll talk about in the next item here. But those could be a problem.
That could be a problem.
To go to a landfill.
Is the state removing creosote-soaked burned railroad ties?
Not, to my knowledge.
Okay. So, that's not part of the toxic...
Not, to my knowledge, but I'll confirm that this week.
But it could be a problem. If you could let me know.
Sure.
I have a number of people that have those, and, you know, once they got on fire, they burned quite a bit, so a lot of substantial damage there, too. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
400 homes inspected by DTSC is pretty amazing. That's the fastest I've ever seen them work.
And just to make a note on that, and Bill and Chris have just been doing an amazing job, they got that disaster declaration up to the state, I think a day and a half after the fire started, which is one of the reasons they got here so quickly, so.
Barry?
Good morning, Chair Foye, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Barry Zimmerman, Human Services Agency, and I'll give a little overview of some of the activities that have gone on, in particular around the local assistance center. And I know sooner or later, we'll have to come back and give proper recognition to everyone that put together these efforts, because it was really a team effort, and I know I had missed everyone, but I just wanted to give a quick acknowledgement to the OES team, CalOES, or the EOC Kevin's team and so forth, that just responded to the needs in order to set up a center like this where we could assist individuals. So, during the last couple of weeks, there are three main things that were happening in relation to assisting and serving the community. One, there was a sheltering events going on, and Red Cross was the operator of that, but the county very much over was a participant in that overseeing and supplying a lot of support for those. At one time, we had four shelters open throughout the county, Ventura, Oxnard, Santa Paula, and Fillmore, for a short period of time, had shelter operations running. So, that means that HSA, Behavioral Health and Healthcare Services, were integral parts in all those operations there. The local assistance center was very much a collaborative effort between the state of California, the city of Ventura, and the county of Ventura. We're all main players in there. And over the time period, we had over 44 different organizations that were housed there. The core group, around 35 of us, were state and city and county operations were there the whole time. So, it was a pretty large undertaking and a great benefit to the community. It was a fully functioning office environment up there with printers, phones, and very impressive infrastructure that went up within, really, a day and a half to achieve that. The total volume, we just had, the count we had was 2,598, just under 2,600 individuals. Those are household counts that came through seeking services and being served by the community there. We have it broken down by each location, but...
Very good. Steve's got a question.
2,600 individuals? Do you know how many separate families?
That's 2,600 households is the...
Oh, households. Okay. More individuals.
The actual number or volume of individuals is greater than that that came through. I do have another sheet that we started tracking a couple of days later. It was on the household count, and so, you know, we had nine households of 10 members or more that were served through the LAC, so the local assistance center. So, the volume was significant there, and we also had a volunteer base, that volunteers came in and helped navigate individuals through each of the service locations there. 13 different elected offices came by or through the center to see how and what support they could offer, which was very beneficial. There are some things, I don't want to sidetrack too much, but there are some things that we were unaware of, how the senator's office could come in and get passport services and these type of things that are new to us, but were able to bring in the state department one day and then fulfill passport requests. So, I mean, it was impressive, the operations all around in the participation there. We did have a housing interface also throughout all these locations, whether it was at the shelter or the local assistance center there. It was staffed, in particular, the CEO's office was assigned to be the intake in the LAC up there to interface with those that were looking for housing. And it met the whole range of options of supply of housings, that there were community groups providing information there on how people could match up with housing demands. As you know, your board did approve a housing assistance program for low... for lower to middle income individuals, and so individuals were screened and then positioned with social workers if they qualified for that program. We opened up, to date, have 150 individual cases that we've opened up under the Board of Supervisors Housing Program to date and are working with those individuals. We anticipate that the recovery will continue beyond this time period and that more and more individuals will become known as time goes on. They may have temporary housing options today and feel no need, but as time goes on, I'm sure they'll become known to us. So, the current status is that all the shelters are closed at this point, closed late last week there. All the individuals that were fire victims associated were transitioned into temporary housing. And at the same time, the winter warming shelter also opened up, which we were able to address those that were previously homeless prior or the chronically homeless into sheltered environments there. The local assistance center did close last Saturday there, and we felt that was appropriate with the transition of who is being served and demographics there. We did hand out flyers, and we do have on the recovery website a listing of all the same functions that were in the local assistance center, of where we can get those services within the community. So, the community has the full capacity to service all those needs there. It's just not going to be in one location at this point in time. Also, our telephone road building there will be kind of the hub for housing assistance intake, so we can service the individuals. And we're setting up a special location that individuals could be served within the business employment side of the house for fire victims, and in particular those that are seeking housing assistance. We'll also have there all the information. We've gathered up all the information that was offered in the local assistance center, and we'll have a resource table there in order to help direct individuals what they need and to educate them what they might need. And that was one of the benefits of the local assistance center is that as you go through, you don't know what you need or don't need at a point in time, but offering that, hey, did you consider vital records or whatever? Then they say, oh, yeah, we will need to secure those. So, we'll have information available at our location for individuals as well. That's kind of just a real overview associated with what's transitioned, what phase we're going into now.
Steve? Thank you. Barry, you were saying that we have 115 individuals, we have 115 individuals that signed up for housing assistance?
We--
And so, I have some of those individuals that signed up, and they said they haven't heard anything. So, you indicated they've been contacted, or, you know, after they signed up, what's the next step? Are we going to contact them, or they have to come back again, and that's--
No, no. We'll contact them. We have 150 open cases right now, meaning that we've met with them and taken our working actively with them. We had over 483 inquiries and phone calls and emails in, and every single one of those individuals have been contacted back as far as last weekend, whether it was, some of them we couldn't, we're playing phone tag and messages back and forth, but each one that we received, we made an effort to contact them back. We will continue that effort until we come up with a resolution of meeting with them and addressing their needs associated with what their request is.
Okay, so there's an active effort for us to now reach back out to them?
Absolutely.
Not something that they need to do? If they haven't heard, they will hear?
They should hear, and if they haven't, we'll need to see where the disconnect because we have been consolidating the intake points, have come from multiple locations, and we have consolidated that in and are making an active effort to reach out.
And then we, what, the report I got last week was that we had lots of people offering home shares, and we didn't have matches made yet. Can you give me a status report there on making those matches? If there was only one match or something like that?
Yeah, on the home share, I don't have a status on that today, but we can run that down and get that out to you.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Linda?
That was my question.
Okay. And then Barry, I appreciate the update and the great work that's going on. What is the situation just purely on housing? What have you heard? I mean, you got a lot of people out there. Wasn't a lot of housing available before this fire?
Yeah, I heard, you know, I mean, there is housing options available, whether it matches up with an individual that are able to--
But there is housing options.
There are housing options available. Where we're seeing the most difficult, though, is on the lower income and affordable housing ranges is what we're finding difficulty right now.
Right, right. Okay, great. Appreciate that. Mike, you have any comment, anything you want to ask?
I'd like to ask so much as appreciation to Barry and Curtis Updike for actually running the center.
Yeah.
You've got to get all those good people under one roof, and that all makes sense, but then somebody's got to actually manage it and run it in an organized fashion, and I think that was really well done.
Yeah, they did a great job.
And just for perspective's sake, too, David Fukatomi is here, and he's a former Deputy Director of CAL OES, now working with the City of Ventura, helping them in their recovery efforts. And I believe he said to me the other day, he hasn't seen a county do this kind of rental assistance before. So, just by way of comparison, I think your board has stepped out front of this, and you can see it's really, I think, going to help a lot of people. Last thing I'd say, too, is we wanted to have the center under one roof, and that's where we could have the most resources. At the same time, we recognize geographically, there's implications out there. We've got folks in the unincorporated areas around Ojai, Santa Paula, Fillmore, and so forth. So, Chris Stevens and team have also put trailers, basically portable facilities, out in Ojai as well as Santa Paula to have folks out there to help with planning. And then HSA and healthcare agency staff have also been out there to help connect people to services as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, so that was, those out stations were through last week, and we'll be evaluating the need to further mobilize associated with the out stations.
If I could, as I've been talking with people and encouraging people to offer their homes and stuff, that effort, you know, while it's all still fresh in everybody's mind is, has the greatest chance of being productive and stuff. So, I have people that, I know there's a million things going on, but, I mean, the report was that we have actually more homes being offered than we have people taking them up on the offer. I can't believe that's going to be the case in the long run, but somehow letting the people know who are offering their homes that, that, you know, getting back with them, letting know we're still working on it, there's still options. So, if, when you get back with me, if you could let me know how many home share offers we have, what kind of, what kind of contact are we keeping with those people so that we can keep those options open as we sort through the stuff? A lot of people, like you said, have some very temporary shelter, but it's only temporary, and they're going to need, you know, the longer term shelter. And then the same thing, having people actually step up and say, yeah, I'm ready to go into home share, let, you know, find out who those people are, and let us know what we have to do to make those matches. Because my understanding is we have a big disconnect right now.
Well, I'll follow up with the home share. We've been, because AAA has the home share structure, and that's the structure we've been encouraging because they kind of have an application process and a vetting process. We've had a very generous community, some opening their homes to individuals without kind of a structured process. And now we're getting calls and saying, now, what do I do with an individual that may have some needs that they can't necessarily take care of? And so, we've encouraged them to go through, and it is a little bit more structured there to make sure that we can match up the needs with the, one, the house that's being offered, and the individuals that are going to be accepted in that.
Anybody from AAA here today to address that?
I don't know. I'll reach out to them, and we'll get a report back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Appreciate that.
Good morning, Vice Chair Foy, members of the board. Mr. Powers, thank you very much for having me here this morning. Also, thank you for sharing those thoughts earlier today. I'll make sure we share those with the EOC staff. They were really doing a lot of great work out there, a lot of great work by a lot of great people, so I'll make sure I pass that along. As it relates to the watershed task force, right now, we're comprised of local, state, and federal organizations. On the federal side, we have what's called a burn area emergency response team. On the state side, we have a watershed emergency response team. Both of those groups are about 35 individuals that make up hydrologists, meteorologists, geologists. In addition to that, we have dozens of local geologists, hydrologists, meteorologists, and first responders that are a part of this team. So, initially, we are in the assessment phase. That assessment phase includes doing what the federal government provided us, which is a burn severity mapping capability that was derived from a satellite image. That's going to go over and look at all the different severe areas of how hot the area burned and what kind of product could be produced from a debris flow. After the assessment's done, we'll do actual on-the-ground assessments to confirm that data. Simultaneously, our county watershed protection district and public works agency, along with all of our city partners, have been running a lot of modeling right now. And all of this information's going to lead to us developing an emergency response posture and guide on what areas are most severe, our hotspot areas. So, right now, we have about 10 identified, but that list will probably grow. And in addition to that, the state and federal teams will assist us in going out and providing emergency protective measures. So, this initial phase we're in right now is this assessment phase. Then we'll transition into an emergency protective measure phase, and then ideally, we'll look at mitigation activities. And so, it's going to be a long-term process. This is the largest watershed assessment that we've ever done in our county for this large of a burn scar. So, it's a pretty big lift, but we have a lot of experts on our hands, pretty big force of over 50 people that are going to be looking at these different areas. On the Ventura, on the Ventura County Recovers website, we have the rain-ready button that's accessible. It's very important for our public to go there because a huge component of being rain-ready is going to be people's personal preparedness. They should build a kit, make a plan, stay informed, which is our general preparedness. But we're also really recommending people take time to approach their insurance providers and discuss the need for flood insurance. People that traditionally aren't in the flood insurance area could potentially be in flood hazard now, given the burn, and they should look into the need for having that. And what's very important about the flood insurance program is it takes 30 days from the day you sign up for it to actually take effect. So, 30 days from now, we could well be into our winter weather season. So, it's important for people to take action now and look into those different protective measures that they need to do for their own property and family safety. And with that, I'm hoping to any questions you may have.
Just real quick, you talked about, and maybe this is, no, shouldn't say this, but there's a lot of people asking if they can help. And you, as Mark had said, we've got 200 miles of, you know, Dozer line, we've got all this stuff. Is there, is there places where you're going to need people? I mean, we have a lot of people clean the rail, clean the rivers, do the beaches, and would want to come out. I don't know if that's because of where this is and some of that stuff, it may not be that you just don't want volunteers to do that work? Is there anything that we as supervisors could do to help bring volunteers? I don't know if you're ready for that, or--
I think we're going to build structures in place to see if there's opportunities for volunteer organizations. During this assessment phase, because it's so technical, we're using government employees for that technical analysis, and we'll look into the need for sandbagging and the deployment of sandbags--
Exactly, that's the kind of stuff I was talking about.
And developing a volunteer structure to assist in that. And I can follow up with the board on that activity.
If there's something we can do, because there's a lot of people that do go out and clean and do, and would love to help, and you saw a lot of people doing that, giving and stuff, so if there's any--
Yeah. In that same regard, we are also getting contacted by, you know, contractors that want to come, you know, get contracts from the county and all that on this. But I would, I know that we have some real expertise out there, as you're saying, government agencies. And I look at like the NRCS, the National Resource Conservation Service, UC Extension, Santa Monica Mountains, RCD, all, these organizations are all out there wanting to do assessments for us, and they have the expertise to do it. So, I'm hoping that maybe we can help them to coordinate and break up, you know, we have a large watershed and all that. But this is something that they could also help work with volunteers, that they're doing replanting programs and all that. So, I don't know if there is an effort to work with these agencies and get them on board and coordinated, too.
So, NRCS is a part of this group because they're a representative on that burn area emergency response team on the federal organization side. But we'll tap into all of those other organizations that have expertise, and we can follow up on how we can coordinate and bring them in. It's a, it's a large geographical footprint, so the more expertise we can have spread out along that footprint, the more effective it's going to be, so.
Thank you. And I had met with UC Extension on a different matter, but they apparently have expertise in there, too. And we've been hearing from other agencies, so I hope that we can utilize them and then let them bring in volunteers or their workers that are skilled.
We'll definitely set up with Jeff Pratt's team a quality assurance, too, because one thing we don't want to create is a, an evaluation or assessment that isn't done by someone who has that qualified expertise. So, we'll make sure we work with the watershed protection district and public works agency to figure out a vetting system for that.
So, number of property owners that have approached, number of property owners that have approached me, and they have slopes that are now more exposed because of the fire. And they're very concerned about taking action as soon as possible because of the potential for rain and, you know, sliding of their homes, et cetera. I'm trying, you know, what advice do we have for them? Do they sit and wait, or can they go ahead and get going on stabilizing the hills that are on their private property? But they own the hill behind them, they own the hill in front of them, and if they don't do something, there'll be a problem. So, this is private property. So, where are we with that? Can you help me, or can other agencies here help me advise those people? What do they do? Do they get started, or should they still wait?
No, we've always educated people that private property is the property owner's responsibility and that they should take action to make sure that their private property isn't going to endanger themselves or their neighbors. And so, there's guidance on the website on how people can start doing that private property rehabilitation, for lack of better terms.
Including the removal of, you know, burn debris on the private property?
So, that's where we need to make sure it's a coordinated effort between what the burn, the debris removal program is and the watershed protection side of it. So, the one needs to happen before the other, which is the debris removal side. But there are some immediate actions that they can take, regardless of whether the debris is removed or not, such as sandbagging, stabilization, some of those types of efforts. But like we've educated in previous burns, it's the private property owner's responsibility to take those actions. And they need to be careful that they're not creating consequential actions to other people's property. And so, we have some education material online that also discusses that kind of stuff. In the past, we've also recommended that they look at engineering services to help them with those, depending on the complexity of what they're dealing with.
That's a good suggestion. I really want to compliment you and watershed protection. Before this fire took place, we had the fire at Casita Springs, and wonderful job of doing an outreach to that community about the flood risk and actually alerting everybody, this is what we're going to do, this is likely to slide and all of that. Will those kinds of meetings take place with neighborhoods where there'll be a neighborhood meeting for the people that live in the Ventura hillsides to talk about how we're going to handle, you know, potential flooding, et cetera, just like you did at Casita Springs? I know that's a huge task, if that's, is any of that planned at this point in time?
So, while we've been doing these town halls while the fire was active, there's been discussions about watershed protection and things people can do. And I'll make sure we work with Matt and the recovery group as a whole, because there's probably more components, the town halls right now, than just the watershed component, in that it would be part of a larger topic. But I'll make sure that we work on the bigger picture of the recovery coordination group to ensure that outreach is done. We're also going to do public information outreach on watershed protection, too. So, there's already been some press releases and information that has gone out, so that's a particular issue.
Oh, great work so far. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and just, Kelly, do you have any questions at all?
Yes, Kevin. I did have a question on the insurance for the flooding. So, for example, when we had the spring fires, you're suggesting people to look at their property, even if you're not living by a creek, but if you have a hillside or so forth, that perhaps you should be looking at insurance for flooding? for flooding, is that correct?
Yeah, we're, well, we always recommend people take advantage of looking into the flood insurance program. And because the burn area exacerbates the potential for flooding, not just debris flows or mudslides, but just flooding in general, the flood insurance program is something that they should look into as a responsible insurance program, or a responsible option for ensuring their household.
If we get a big rain, yes.
And also, just so you know, we would also be looking at, you know, in January, being able to do town halls for, you know, San Paul and so on. Because you're correct in the fact that I think those other items that I would, I think our city managers and municipal members and the unincorporated areas would like to get a better understanding of sort of next steps, and not just the flooding, but, you know, just questions that arise that you didn't think about. And so we would support that.
We'll make sure whenever there's those public meetings, that there's a representative from the watershed task force that would be able to provide that information, Supervisor.
Great. Linda?
I'll ask that question that you just brought up.
You gonna ask it?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Kevin. And, you know, just amazing, it seemed like he never slept, and it probably is true during the first several days.
The sheriff made sure I was sleeping.
Yeah, so anyway, just thank you for, personally, for your good work and the communication. And it is a tremendous responsibility, as everyone has, and you really took it well. And just, you talk about all the different partners, and obviously, our county family and the first responders and everyone who came from throughout the state. And there's also people helping people, and then also a lot of organizations, nonprofits that have stepped up. And I just hope that maybe at a soon upcoming meeting, we can do something to really thank those, you know, just tremendous work from Red Cross to United Way to, I think, the Ventura County Community Foundation put in almost a half million dollars in the middle of this. And just like so many different organizations came together, I really would like to be able to give them our thanks.
To that point, Supervisor Parks, sorry, your email, and that we will put that list together. Because the list is that list that you've included, and there's others. The Temple helps people that they go back up into their homes and give them whatever they might need. I've heard from so many people in the community, all the different groups have rallied. So we'll collect that list and look for information from you as well in compiling it. So thank you.
One final question. I don't know if it's for Kevin or whether you can handle it, Matt. So we have, because, you know, a lot of these homes are hillside homes, and they, the debris is from their actual burn, sometimes it started to fall down their hill, right? And they're asking if heavy rains come, it's likely that that debris from their property will actually slide into the street, that kind of thing. Are they responsible? Are we doing that kind of evaluation in the, in sort of the rain projection waters...
Yeah, because are they supposed to put, are they supposed to put sandbags or those round, you know, whatever kind of stuff, whatever to stop that?
We're talking about big metal, you know, slabs and, you know, dust and dirt and...
I'll let the experts answer on that. But I do want to note that the member on the Ventura task force where there's much exposure on the hillsides is our former Watershed Protection District Director, Tully Clifford, who's an expert in these areas. So he's been very active with this task force, planning the mitigation and the assessment up in the Ventura hillside area. So Jeff, is that a question you can answer?
I can, Kevin. Yeah. I, you know, there's a flood insurance question more particularly.
So traditionally, it gets complex, so we'll have a full assessment that will be able to vet out all these complexities, because it really comes down to, is the mud flowing onto a public right of way? Is the mud flowing onto a private right of way? We saw these complexities a little bit at the Camrio Springs debris flow, where it was a private property owner's material that was going into other private property and also the HOA. And how we differentiate that and how those debrays get removed is complex. So in short, we ask people that if, that they have the responsibility to maintain their private property. And if there's mud that flows from there onto private or onto public property, we tend to do emergency debris removal so that we don't impede emergency response activities in that area. So going to the specifics of your question, people that have that mud that's in their backyard, they need, they're responsible for that. And they, they need to take remedial actions to try and fix that from occurring.
So when you're talking about mud, we're just talking about...
Or debris.
Okay, ash. Because I was driving up there, you're right on the edge, and you're sitting like this. As soon as it runs, all that ash and everything else is going to run into the road. Their responsibility to make sure that doesn't happen. Is that's really what you're saying?
Prior to the rain, or you're talking just right now with the rain?
No, I'm saying right now, you have a chance to go and protect it if it starts to rain at some point, before they clean it off. I guess that's my, that's my question is, that stuff runs, it's down, going into the drains, going into creeks. I mean, that's what I was curious about.
So traditionally, we haven't said that's anybody's responsibility. We'd have to defer to council, excuse me, for the record, Jeff Pratt with Public Works Watershed Protection. And the answer Kevin gave is right on board with your board's policies in the past. The one thing I would add to Kevin's answer about private versus public property is that the sheriff, if he determines emergency exists, can tell us to get onto roads, transportation, or watershed to get on private property to protect public property or life and health. But we will clean the stuff up off of the public right of way. Traditionally, we haven't. It's never been anybody's, it's a disaster. Everybody does what they can. First phase is protect yourself, which is the word we're trying to get out. And you're not going, I don't think anybody's going to be able to hold, if we get the rain, going to be able to hold these hillsides back. We've got models run right now that will give us a very conservative answer, in other words, make the situation bad, that can be used for evacuations and trying to predict where mud flows will occur. We will refine those models as information comes in on burn severity from the bear and work teams. And we will try to be very, as very, as specific as we can about where we think it's going to be the worst. But nobody can predict exactly where it's going to flow. So I hope that answers your question. I don't, you know, I'll defer to Leroy. We've never said to a private property owner, you're responsible for keeping that off of public property.
And I understand that. I mean, probably most of this is in the cities of Ventura and some of these areas, the same kind of a thing. It just is a homeowner, it hasn't been cleaned up. Should I put something across my driveway because my driveway's like this and all that's flowing into the road? That's all more stuff I was asking.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, you should. The website, as Kevin said, will help you with that. And if you hire an expert, you'll get even more help with that. Hopefully that...
So if I, if I could, so we've got a street here, we've got a house here, steep slope. Half of the house is on the steep slope now. So we're not talking just about mud. We're talking about the actual house. With some rain, the rest of that house is going to slide down into the street. Does that property owner have to pull a permit to do something to stabilize that debris? Are they allowed to do that? Are we going to assess those properties that are in that kind of situation? Is there some place for that property owner to go to get an answer to that question? What's the property owner's responsibility? What's our responsibility? That's it.
To determine whether their house was...
Literally perched above a street, as an example, if what I have.
Well, I thought Kevin came up here to point me. So I'll take the first shot at it.
Chris to help, we're going to need Chris to help with permitting.
We are going, we are going to be able to tell your hill's going to move, and we'll tell you what we think it's going to do, given a certain level of storm. But I think, as I understand it, it's a property responsibility to get a private engineer to tell them that their house is going to move as well. We'll give them our best guess, but...
The burnt house.
Oh, the burnt house.
Yeah, just that dirt and dust and...
Okay, okay, sorry.
We have, half of the house has fallen.
Let me declare, I mean, it's harsh, but it's pretty simple. It's the private landowner's responsibility.
And I appreciate that, but they, do they have to get a permit? And what kind of permit do they have to get if they've got debris perched and it's potentially contaminated?
Okay, and that's a different question. Whatever permit applies, and I don't know what applies. And part of the agenda today is to waive certain, at least fees for some permits. But you'd have to go through the normal permit process.
And maybe there's something in there that's being missed, and that is that the way it's going to work with the debris removal portion when OES and CalRecycle get here is they're going to take all of that out. So my answer to your question, assume that that was done. When they come, the Public Works people I've talked to and the other burned areas say, CalRecycle puts the erosion control around the areas that they disturb. So that gets to Supervisor Foy's question about, but that's not the hillside question, and that's not the partially burned question, or somebody's got a house that might move just because the hills moving.
Sure. And realize you're trying to answer all of those questions, and I'm just trying to get to that specific side of it. I know ultimately, this debris is going to be removed by, by CalRecycle. In the, but it's going to take some time for that to happen. So if we have heavy rain before CalRecycle gets there, they have this slope that's, that has now burned debris on it, are they allowed to do that? Are they even allowed to do that under our emergency? And then what kind of permits, what kind of permits would they need? Can you help us with that, Chris? Thanks.
Yeah, sure. Supervisor Bennett, for the record, Chris Stevens with the Resource Management Agency. That's a very good question. That's probably one of the top questions we've gotten in the last two weeks.
Oh, okay.
As it's related to debris removal. We've been working with CalEOS, and they just got to us on Friday, the fact sheets that we were going to kind of customize here for Ventura County. I know we have Eric on the line, and I think Eric might be the best person to respond to that. When they do that cleanup on the Phase Two, if we do go with the state program, they clean up a very specific area, and what's outside of that area, I believe, will remain the private property owner's responsibility. So in your scenario, that wouldn't be determined until the second phase area, I believe, would be assessed and removed. But I would, I think Eric on the line may be the best.
And just one question for you before we go to Eric, and that is, what about the interim period before they get in there and clean up that property?
I think at this point, I'd like to hear what Eric has to say, and then we can decide how best to approach that.
Eric, do you have a, can you make comment?
Yeah, I can. Thank you, Supervisors. On that particular issue, what we generally recommend is that individuals can certainly undertake any sort of basic erosion controls, putting wattles or sandbags in place around the debris to mitigate whatever erosion is possible. As Kevin indicated, if there's threats to a public right of way, local officials could certainly undertake emergency protective measures under this local health emergency to address that. What we would like to discourage is individuals trying to remove debris. We understand there's a threat. Individuals can take actions to try to mitigate that threat with some basic erosion controls, but we'd like to discourage folks from getting in there and completely removing the debris. What we will do when our program starts, and I've got further comments that I'm happy to make, but just in respect to this question, once we begin the project, we'll be operating in a unified command with the city and the county. And obviously, one of our first priorities will be identifying what are those priority sites that we need to get to first. And so where we've got sites, such as what the supervisor articulated, where we've got a significant threat on a slope, those will be sites that we can prioritize for cleanup at the beginning of the project.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I just have one final question for Chris, so, and potentially for Jeff. So if they're not going to remove the debris, but they're going to go in there and going to try to do some erosion stability so the debris potentially doesn't move, do they have to get permits to do that?
The, one of the interesting things that happens, and one of the reasons we're waiting for those fact sheets, is that when we get into this Phase Two process, actually, the process gets a little bifurcated between the city and the county. So I can only answer, I think, from our perspective, and Jeff can respond, they wouldn't need, that I'm aware of, any permits from the Resource Management Agency.
For erosion control.
For erosion control. We would probably have a review by our environmental health team to make sure that what they're doing is not going to perhaps move the debris in some fashion, you know, in a direction that, you know, wasn't going to go otherwise. But I don't know if, do you have any? Jeff?
There will be no permits required by Public Works, and that presumes, we're coming to see with the grading ordinance, the grading ordinance says if you, there will be people who want to go above and beyond just what happened around their house. Your board's going to have to make a decision on where you want that threshold to be, given this emergency. So we've got that scheduled. I think it's for the ninth or the next board meeting. But at this point, you don't need to come and see us for erosion control, and you'll make the determination on what the grading threshold is.
As long as it's truly related to the fire and erosion control, and somebody's not trying to take advantage of it.
Yes, and I should say that, you know, that's, that there will be people who put stuff, there could be people who put stuff in places, as Chris alluded to, that might make the situation worse for their neighbors. That's where you'll, your board will get calls, or our office will get calls about. But there's nothing that we have that requires a permit for erosion control.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Hey, thank you very much. I know these are all, everybody's, everybody's moving on the fly.
Matt, real quick, Mike, you have...
The only thing I would say is, it's such a good question. I think what we'll do too is we'll try to get a better handle on what some of those erosion control measures are, be a little bit more specific, and maybe talk to Sonoma and see what they've done. So we find out where that line is, what they can do, what's going too far and so forth, just from a homeowner's understanding there.
And just real quick, Eric, you had, you've heard a lot of comments over the last 40 minutes. Do you have anything else you'd like to make, some comments on anything else you've heard?
Yeah, what I'd like to do with the Chair's indulgence is just provide a little bit more perspective on our Phase Two program.
Do we want to hold that?
Do you want to hold that till the next, till the next item?
We have a couple more agenda items.
Okay, hang on a second, Eric. Let's let it, we'll get you a chance to do that in a little bit.
And when Eric explains, I would like to also know, what is the definition of debris? Because we're saying, don't remove debris. Does that mean brush clearance, or does that mean, you know, burned down structures or what have you? So that will be something I'd be interested in hearing.
Okay, Matt?
Okay, so thank you for letting us brief on those areas. I did want to recognize three other task forces that we don't have representing. For the sake of time, we have K-Man, who's heading up our finance task force, who's engaged in meeting with both city and OES folks, and had their kickoff meeting to make sure we're tracking costs appropriately and look for the recovery costs. We have Bill Nash, who's heading up the public information group. And then we have Joan Rahoe, who's heading up the healthcare group, and with her and Dr. Levner here, if you have any questions for them today. I did want to make note on the public information side, you know, we've put a tremendous effort into that website of reaching out. We had a goal, as Barry said, of last week, of making sure every inquiry, every person who registered got a touch point back to them from us last week. There were, there were more than, I believe, 1,000 of those registrations. So it was quite a bit of effort. And the other effort we've really been focusing on is Spanish language transfer, translation. As you know, we had what is a very common practice out there at the majority of OESs where we use Google Translate, because it translates emergency information into multiple language. We heard some concerns with that. We mobilized very quickly, OES put a near-real-time translator in their OES to translate messages as they went out. All our press releases, all the website has been converted to natural, to the best possible for our local interpretation experts, natural language conversions. And we actually were ahead of our neighbor county to the north in doing that. I think somebody pointed out to them, their practice on their website, they actually started doing that as a result of what we were, we heard and we improved on our website. So a lot of effort's been going into that, both at the town halls and on the website. So I want to make sure.
I got to commend you guys on that your communication has just been tremendous. And then Kevin and the sheriff, and even to the point where, you know, a lot of stuff, you go up the line, but they had those people there, live bodies that would answer calls and questions. And I know that costs money and time, and I just appreciate that kind of communication when people could get ahold of live people, so.
Yeah, and OES had a lot, as you say, people that are answering the phones, and they also had translation services there as well.
Then the last thing is, you know, this whole task force structure that Mike sat down very early with David out here and Dan at the city and came up with this, it's really worked effectively. And I know, I really appreciate Mike stepping in and kind of envisioning how this process is going to look, because it put our, all our fingers in the right places, and the coordination with the city as a result of that leadership's been great. So thank you very much. With after, any questions?
Do you have any questions for Dr. Levin? I know we've got a lot of stuff, and Eric, I don't know if there's anything that, Doctor, do you have anything you'd like to say to us? Sure, come on down real quick. I know Jeff Berg is saying we're dragging this meeting on, but...
I just would say briefly that I was, Robert Levin, for the record. I've been in contact with the head of one of the emergency rooms that would be impacted by this, and he's been surprised by really the lack of increase in illness-related activities related to this fire. There have been, what he said was, a few more people coming in with cough and respiratory problems, but it's really been limited.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. And do you see anything future, I guess winds, whatever is going to cause some of that ash to be in the air, but otherwise, we're good, or?
Well, it's, you know, I don't have experience with a fire this massive. I'm, you know, I think it's possible that ash and smoke could come back into areas, but from my perch up in Ojai, things have been getting better every day, and I'm hoping that's a trend.
Great, that's wonderful. Well, good, I'm glad to hear that we didn't have a lot of that. I'm glad to hear that we didn't have a lot of that there.
And just also compliments to the Air Quality, Air Pollution Control District and start putting out air quality reports and giving people a real good idea, do I want to go outside and, and be outside today? And they've done a really good report in addition, you know, morning, evening reports and then also by geography. So they did a really good job, which continues today.
Go ahead.
Sir, hi, Dr. Levin. Thanks to see your grandson here. Thank you. Wanted to just touch on the subject as well. We're talking about air quality and ash and so forth. The city had actually sprayed some material on some of the properties to prevent the ash from being spread. And Barry Fisher here, who is leading the recovery efforts, our old friend Barry, leading the recovery efforts from the city of Ventura, can speak to that issue and answer some of your questions.
Just couldn't stay away. They always get the good guys when they need to.
I missed you guys. Chair Floyd, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Barry Fisher, interim assistant city manager for city of Ventura. What we're doing is spraying, it's similar to what contractors do to some hillsides. It's the same material where they've got seed in it, except what we're spraying, it doesn't include the seed in it. So our goal is to keep the ash down and to just a very basic erosion control for starters. City staff is doing about 60 properties a day, so they're really moving on that. It's non-toxic. We also do it on some of the city-owned properties that were affected by the fires as well.
Can you, can you just give, we have a lot of residents asking about when it's going to happen in their neighborhood. Can, can, you say 60 a day? Can you give us an idea of what percent completion are you at this point in time? What, what do you have left and what kind of?
I don't have exact numbers, but at the rate they're going now, they should have most of the properties done by the end of the week.
Okay, so most, most areas will be by, by, by New Year's have, have been sprayed.
Yes.
All right, in terms of, okay, great. That's great. I'm glad they. That's just in, that's just in the city of Ventura?
Correct.
Glad they picked you because with your relationships here, it makes it a lot easier for everybody to do it. You're busy over the holidays now, man.
Yes, it's working out well.
Yeah, that's good. I'm glad, we're glad you're, you're part of that and working with Dan and stuff over there, so that's good. Is there somebody that, that people can contact to find out approximately when they're going to be sprayed?
Tolly Clifford, over at the city, is coordinating that, so his department will be able to give them an idea of when they'll be there.
And quite frankly, it's not the people who's, who've been burned out, it's the people that live next door to the people. I know, that's where we're really getting at. Giving me those questions, right? Thank you. Thanks. Okay, Matt? Where, where are we at?
That's the report, and at this time, we'd like to recommend your board approve the extension of the declaration of local emergency and public health emergency.
Okay. And we're still going to get? Is this a public?
Yes. We'll have the next agenda item on.
Move the recommended action. We have a motion in a second. Will you vote?
Need a roll call vote. Yes.
And you said yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
And then we have Chris again now.
Good morning. The, as I mentioned earlier, the primary questions we've been getting and I think the board members have been hearing about have been related to debris removal, which will be the subject of the next item, so I won't talk about that right now. But after debris removal, there are a lot of folks already talking about how they can get back on their property, rebuild and kind of get their life back to some level of normalcy. Fortunately, our zoning ordinance and our building codes contemplate disasters of, of this ilk and provides some mechanisms to, to expedite the permitting of temporary dwellings and rebuilding of dwellings. It also provides us some opportunities, kind of administratively, to do some things to assist homeowners who have lost their home. We've been doing those things. They, they include an ability to issue emergency use authorizations, for example. In this case, we've, we've issued three related to the disaster. One to Tolon landfill, one to the Simi Valley landfill, and then we just issued one to the Ojai Valley School related to their upper campus that was damaged in the fire. So the ordinance does provide us some, some opportunities for administrative actions that we can take at, at the staff level, and, and we've been doing that. Another one related to the demolition permits are normally required within the planning division and the, and the building and safety division. We are not going to require them in the planning division. They don't make sense in this case. The purpose normally is to document within the planning files that the structures have been removed because of our damage assessment teams already being out in the field through our leading building and safety division. That's already been demonstrated. There's really no need to have, require a permit to do that. It's already been, already been found to, to be the case. So we're doing a lot of administrative things that, that the code allows us to do. One of the other things that we get asked a lot about are the fees. Are you, are you going to waive our fees? How are, you know, how are you going to make this easier for us? That was a very good question, and that's an area that we don't have the administrative authority to waive fees. And that's why we're before you today. We thought in the interest of getting the information out to the property owners sooner rather than later, we would come to you at this special meeting with the recommendation to waive certain fees within the planning, building and safety and environmental health divisions related to the placement of temporary dwelling units on properties where their homes have been destroyed. The ordinance already allows us to do that, but there are a number of fees associated with that, and what our recommendation today is that we waive those fees. That's going to be the first order of business to get folks back in homes. As you said, they've lost their homes. They were put right into a very tight rental market, tight housing market, and there's been a lot of interest expressed in locating a temporary, an RV, a mobile home or something back on their property as quickly as possible. So our recommendation today, we've identified very specific fees. We thought it was important to do that at this point, rather than kind of get into discussions about whether or not this fee or that might actually apply. As you'll see, it's a very specific list of fees. We think it'll be very effective in addressing this initial interest that we've heard about of locating mobile homes and RVs on the properties. We've noted in the staff report that we think there's some other tweaks we might want to do to the ordinance. Those are not as urgent. We didn't bring those to you today. We want to take our time to make sure we kind of get that ironed out and we can bring those back to you probably in January with some further recommendations.
Chris, you, you said homes that have been destroyed. What about ones that have been damaged and they need to work on? Same thing? Would that have been?
Yeah, yeah. Destroyed or substantially damaged is the terminology that we use in, in the ordinance. And, and in essence, what that means is they're, they cannot be lived in. So it would apply to both.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sure. So, so I just want to be clear because there's already been some misunderstanding as people have talked to me. These fees are for people putting temporary structures on the property where they have had significant, substantial fire damage that you're talking about. It's not to put these, we're not waiving fees for everybody to put these on their property. If their property had no damage, then we're not waiving the fees in those situations.
That's correct.
Right. So if somebody makes the case that, well, they're putting the mobile home on their property to house somebody else, that's the argument that's being made, but I thought it seems like a very slippery slope.
That's right. That would require a more substantial amendment to our ordinance. Our ordinance doesn't contemplate that. It contemplates you placing it on the property where the structure was damaged.
Got it. And in the unincorporated area, that's.
And this only applies to the unincorporated area. The, we forwarded our ordinance section to the city of Ventura because they, they actually did not have a section like that within their ordinance. That will eventually be brought back to their city council. And we sent it over to them in the interest of maybe keeping things as consistent as possible.
And maybe too soon for you to answer this question, but, you know, I, I know we're not going to, at least we've, the conversations I've had, we're not going to waive safety requirements. People are going to have to rebuild with, with modern codes and, and all of that. But what people are asking consistently is, if they had a grandfathered square footage unit, you know, if they had a grandfathered footprint, right, are they going to be allowed to rebuild on that, you know, with that footprint, those structures? They'll have to build it to modern standards, but, or will they, will they, like, for example, they're too close to their setback. Their old, their old house was, was encroached on the setback. And now, can they, can they still encroach because their old house was there? That's the fundamental question that I'm getting a lot.
Generally speaking, if you wish to rebuild in the same footprint that had a non-conforming element to it, you will be allowed to rebuild with that non-conforming element. I, the only reason I say generally is that, and I don't, I'm not aware of any, but if you had a particular case where in fact this non-conforming element actually created a safety issue, we might have to revisit that. But lacking that, the code would allow you to rebuild. You do not lose your non-conforming status by virtue of the fire.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So as I look through this, all these fees, so you're talking about just not putting something there? If you've got to hook your motorhome up to a sewer, are you electric, whatever? All those kinds of fees are.
That's correct.
Okay, that's great. I really appreciate it. Linda?
And this just applies to the unincorporated county, and the resolution starts off with, you know, some 250 homes were lost or damaged. Do we have an estimate what it is in the unincorporated area? So we have a scale?
That, that is the unincorporated area number, 250.
250 in the unincorporated area?
That's correct.
Oh, my goodness. That is a lot. And then I, I'm also wondering about the ability to expedite, and I guess that will be probably a, a future item, cannot just expedite this particular issue, but just the ability to get houses rebuilt.
Right. Well, some of the things we're looking at, as I said, a lot of the things we can do, we feel administratively, that we will try to do, if there are things in the process that would require some sort of an amendment. In order to do that, we'd bring those back to the board. But for now, we, we haven't identified any of those per se, but we're just, we're just in the early days of this. So I imagine as we gain some experience, there may be some more. But we're, we're trying to, we want to identify a single point of contact for someone so they're not having to go around all the counters. Another thing that we're doing in the city of Ventura is doing this as well. Their head of us in this respect is developing property files. So those that lost a home, we will have a complete file that shows all of their building permits, planning permits, their records that we can give to them, their zoning requirements to, to kind of jumpstart their review and how, where they want to go. It would identify if they had any legal non-conforming elements, what those were, so they were sure they knew exactly what, what they, what rights they had, for example.
And that, that was really impressive too, to see that you were doing that, you know, weeks ago already, helping homeowners get this whole packet of information on, on their home. So I, we'll see how it works out, but generally what causes the need for expediting is the fact that we don't have enough staff. But we've recently hired some new planners, I know that too, but just seeing what we can do so we, you know, can eliminate some of the delays that the process generally has in it.
Right, yeah. The, one of the primary issues in the process, as you know, is going through the CEQA process. Those that would wish to rebuild on their existing footprint will be exempt from the CEQA process, so that, that in and of itself will expedite those processes for those that wish to do that.
Chris, and maybe this has nothing to do with what you're doing, but just trying to help people. 99% of people buy a home, they don't build a home. And the idea for them to think about, they're going to go out and build a home, they don't realize what that entails. Is, you know, for a guy who's built a lot of homes, I'm going to just tell you, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of thing from the standpoint of, you know, architect, an engineer, this or that. And we, when the governor came down, one of their staff was concerned about this, people would just leave and be done because it's so much work. I don't know how we try to inform people or do it. I mean, it's hard because people, you know, you talk to people, where do I start? What do I do? I mean, I've always just walked up and put my down, paid it down and bought a home. I don't ever do stuff. I don't know how we're.
We will probably do as we do today, even before this disaster. If someone comes in, we will just explain to them the process and indicate that, that they may want to hire these professionals. We can't provide recommendations about specific professionals. We just kind of give them an overall description of the process.
That's what I meant. At least to understand the process of what they're trying to do.
Absolutely, absolutely. And one of the first things that we posted on our webpage was information about unscrupulous contractors and such that are out there.
And I saw some signs as I toured around, some of you guys have been, people watch out for scams and that, which is great.
Talked to one property owner, he'd been contacted by 20 contractors in the first weekend. So, you know, there's going to be, and not, not to say they're unscrupulous, but, you know, there's, there's going to be a lot of contact by contractors and you're going to have to beware.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I just, those things, so. All right. Thank you. We have a speaker on this, so unless anybody has any other questions, real quick. Adam Whitman?
Wickens.
Wickens? Oh, there he is. Okay. Thanks for coming out today.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the board's time. I am a resident of the Ojai Valley, unincorporated area. I lost my house in the fire.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
I am, we are moving on. We've got a rental in Ventura. We've got that squared away. I'm a county employee. I appreciate the last two weeks that you gave us to square things away. We've been putting things in order. Long story short, I was also a, I used the Resource Center. It was a great opportunity to, all those resources together, it was, it was a valuable time saver. I mean, we spent a lot of time rebuilding and getting all the things back that we've lost and we're working on that. I did have a couple of questions that were unable to be answered by the Resource Center, and you kind of answered them this morning. Doesn't sound like you're going to waive building code requirement upgrades. That is something that obviously we're concerned about, having enough money to rebuild and the amount of money that it's going to cost to get our, our house into compliance. But one of the things is really Phase Two, maybe Eric is the person to answer that, but the Phase Two of the cleanup. I don't know that a lot of policies differentiate between, when I'm saying policies, insurance policies differentiate between cleanup costs and building costs. All that money comes from the same pool. So one of my concerns when I was at the Resource Center was they were going to bill our insurance the amount of money that it costs to clean up our, our property if we signed on with the state to do that. All that money that, since it's coming from the same pool, is money that we can't use to rebuild. So there was no, they couldn't answer the question of how much money the state was going to charge us to clean up the property. So it's a difficult evaluation to know whether or not we're going to sign up with the state program or hire, have a contractor remove the rubbish. So maybe there's some sort of dialogue.
Does your insurance have replacement cost or just at a flat amount?
Well, there's, they worded it a little differently. They don't say replacement cost. What they say is, they give you X amount of dollars, maybe 600,000 to rebuild, and then you have addendums. I have a rider that adds another 150,000 or something like that. So it has to come from that pool of money. And so I have to, as a homeowner, I have to evaluate all the money that is going to cost, I'm going to pay the state if it's, if there's no limit on what they charge us for the cleanup. I have to make that evaluation. I can't do that if I don't know what the state's going to charge for the cleanup.
Did your insurance policy have a separate debris removal portion in it?
Not aware of, no. Not aware of, no, it all comes from the same general pool of money.
Have you talked to your insurance agent?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, again, it's, knowing those costs would be, I can't make an informed decision if I don't know.
I understand what you're saying. Steve, you're going to say something?
And I can't give you legal advice or anything else, but I specifically asked that question of Dave Jones, the state insurance commissioner, when he was down here. And it all depends on, nobody can answer that question definitively for you right now, but before you sign, you will be able to get the answer to that question, before you sign the thing. We're still working out that contract with Cal OES and Cal Recycle, so we're still working out that contract. But in a number of places in the past, the state only takes the money from the part of your policy that is a rider, that is specifically designated for debris removal.
And if there's no rider?
And if there's no rider, the implication from his comments were, then they didn't take, they didn't take it out of your replacement cost. But that's not guaranteed yet until we actually see the exact agreement that we end up with, with Cal Recycle, in terms of whether they're going to, whether they'll do that or not do that. So, it's, you're asking the spot-on right question, and nobody has the answer until we have that, but that's the question that you and everybody else will want to make sure that they have answered before they sign on the dotted line. At the same time, I don't want to discourage people from signing on the dotted line, because he pointed out a tremendous number of advantages, which is, the state takes all the liability, the state takes the permitting side of it, and for you to tackle that yourself, he thought, he couldn't again guarantee, but he thought the odds of you getting it done less expensively would be very slim, and certainly not less, with less liability to yourself in terms of all the things you would have to do to do it yourself. So, he was overall encouraging people to do that, but asking that important question as they get ready to do that stuff. So, they tried to set it up so that it doesn't come out of your replacement cost, that it only comes from the debris removal.
And that was my biggest concern.
And so, again, that was just his tentative answer and.
And I think Bill has some comments on this, Bill, would you like to make comment on that?
Great, yeah.
We won't take away from your time, Adam, but just in case, Bill, maybe you'll answer some of those questions.
Supervisor Bennett is correct, it's whatever rider you have in your policy, for, for example, $15,000 debris removal, that's what part of the agreement would address, and that would be the part that would go to the local jurisdiction, the state or the county or the city, as part of that process. But if they didn't have that, we're going to look into that, but that was my understanding as well. It's only that provision in the sewer, in the insurance, that talks about specifically debris removal.
So, we're going to fight to try to get that, but.
Much appreciated. And the support from the community has been overwhelming, just from this side of the.
Oh, yeah, no, no, we understand, that's why, but Mike, you were going to say.
I just wanted to clarify, make sure I understand what Mr. Stratton was saying, is if your rider has debris removal, says it's 15,000, if it costs Cal Recycle 50,000, you're only going to have to cover that 50, they're not going to come after you for the gap. Is that your understanding, Mr. Stratton? And he's nodding his head, yes, thank you.
And Eric, is that a comment, is that what you'd understand, too?
Yeah, thank you for giving me the chance to weigh in on that. That's absolutely correct. The purpose of our program, when we collect insurance, is not to try to make our costs whole, it's to ensure that we're not duplicating benefits. We've got state government authorizing funding, depending on the county's action, here the county's authorizing to pay a portion of the project cost as well. We're optimistic that ultimately, we'll get support from the federal government. And so, what we're trying to do is ensure that we're not duplicating benefits. And so, we've got an obligation to collect what we can, but in no way do we ever want to affect the resident's ability to rebuild. So, there's generally two types of insurance, the way it's set up for debris, sometimes there's a specific clause for debris. Let's say that clause is $15,000, let's say our cost of doing the cleanup was $60,000, the county will be looking to collect that $15,000 and only that. We don't send any bills to individuals, but sometimes what does happen is somebody gets a full disbursement from their insurance policy, from their insurance carrier, which covers the debris portion. And so, in some cases, after the fact, after that individual's already received that full disbursement, the county will be looking to collect that portion that was set aside for debris. And obviously, sometimes folks will interpret that as receiving a bill, when in fact, we're just trying to collect what was already previously identified as being set aside for debris. In some folks' policies, debris is part of an umbrella coverage, the percentage of the total coverage, and it includes, that coverage includes the money they need for the rebuild. In the right-of-entry form that the individual signs, it specifically says in Section Two of that form, and county staff's got a copy of that, that we will look to collect in those situations only after the rebuild has occurred. And if after the rebuild's occurred, that percentage that was set aside for debris is no longer there, because it costs more to rebuild, which sometimes is going to be the case, then there's nothing for us to collect. But what we are asking of the county is to ensure that every reasonable effort that can be made is made to try to collect what is previously, what's been already identified in the insurance policy for debris.
That's great, Eric, that's very, very helpful, and I think there's a smile on his face here when he hears that.
Yeah, he might answer the question, yeah. Again, thank you for the board's time.
No, well, thank you, you know, there's nothing we can do but say we're sorry to hear that.
In future deliberations, I mean, as you, the streamlining process that the Resource Management Agency was talking about is going to be a great benefit, so please, anything, I mean, any dollar that we spend on a permit fee is going to be a dollar that doesn't go to reconstruction, and it's going to be, honestly, it's going to be tied for many of us to rebuild what we have.
Yeah, there's no question, depending how old your house is versus new, and let's just be honest, we've got stuff in the Gulf, Florida, Puerto Rico, Santa Rosa, costs are going to go up, there's so much material that is going to be required for this, and you know, it's going to be tough, and you're right, so, anyway. But all the best to you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Just philosophically, we're going to, I think, as you've heard, we're bending over backwards to try to help in every way, the one place, the one corner that we won't cut, talking with staff and I agree with, is the safety corner. People will want us to not impose those standards, but there's just no way that we could, in good faith with the community and from a liability standpoint, waive those things, so. I know that'll be frustrating, but that.
That was actually going to be a topic that I wanted to talk about, but you've covered it. In discussion, I've already hired a contractor, in discussion with my contractor, he was concerned that if you didn't impose those fees, or those requirements, that the, like, we have building code upgrade coverage, so if you guys didn't require it, we wouldn't be able to tap into that money to actually improve the structure, which we would have wanted to do.
Okay. Everybody would be better off than that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we're looking for a motion on this. Do you have anything else you want to?
Wait, I do have a question.
Okay, Kelly?
I wondered first, this is on residential.
So personal.
A few ranches and so forth that are also looking to get repaired, and I wanted to make sure that we will, make sure we had the right fees waived for them as well. Chris, could you, is there any other fees that are associated with a ranch getting a barn up? It's a very large economy for our residents as well, so I understand that residential is very important, but I also may ask about those as well.
No, that's a good question. Those are not included in the package in front of you today, as mentioned in the board letter, we are going to be evaluating this and coming back later, probably in January or maybe February. Our focus right here was to address those that lost their residence and are looking to get a place to live in a timely.
And these are more the temporary type fees and things like that, right?
Oh, yes, they could be, that's right.
Yeah, because we're not talking about building fees, we're not talking about rebuilding a home, or I think, Kelly, you're talking about rebuilding a barn or some outbuilding.
And we would look at that as.
Well, there are some temporary things that they need to get going to get them through, I was going to ask if we're more than one powerful, if they need, you know, a couple temporary to get to their location, is that waived or waived, or is only the first one waived?
At this point, it's only that related to residential. We are intending to return, as I said back in January, after we've had a chance to look at kind of a broader spectrum of items and permits and fees that we could address.
Okay, and so, if those people who are doing this go to Winston or the planning department, what will they be told?
That they.
That those fees will be, they will be charged these fees, or that we'll be looking into those? Because what I don't want to happen is that businesses go away because they're not sure, we haven't addressed that yet.
The, what we would tell them at the counter is that we can issue them that permit under our ordinance today, we would charge them that fee, and let them know, as I just said, that we intend to return to the board with further recommendations for fee waivers, and at that time, if those fees are waived and the board wishes to do that retroactively, they would get a refund of those fees.
Thank you.
Just have one question for county council, when we tried to do retroactive fee waiver in the past, we've had some legal questions arise, are we going to be able to do retroactive fee waiver?
I'm not sure of the answer, I think it is a, it is a problem, and I think it would, if I had to say it now, I'd say you cannot retroactively forgive fees.
Okay, so.
That's all I was asking.
So, hopefully, January 9th, we could potentially have this item agendized, so that, so that, yeah, so if we could do that, because as Mr. Watkins says, he's trying to figure out what fees is he going to be being charged also, because this only deals with the temporary dwellings, and so, it's a larger question, and I think we need staff to have time to figure out what the, what are all the impacts, what fees do you waive, where you, how far do you go without people abusing it and stuff? But I know that in the past, when we tried to do this retroactive, county council.
Yeah, our intention was to bring this actually January 9th, but because we were having the special meeting, we thought we would at least get this item, which we were very comfortable with doing, out early to answer the primary questions we're receiving, and then hopefully, we'll be back on the 9th.
And do you anticipate that many people would be coming in for those permits before January 9th? I mean, they've got to get their architects on board and all of that kind of stuff, it's not likely that most people would have that effect.
The one that Supervisor Long mentioned that jumps out at me was the temporary power pole, and there may be someone who wishes to do that, that's a relatively inexpensive permit, thankfully, but other than that, I think you're probably correct, there probably won't be a lot of applications in the next year.
Thank you very much. They've got to get something designed. And as you possibly bring that back, this is a little bit different, these fees, doesn't require a lot from us. If you're building a house, you're doing, you require inspections, you require, so when you waive fees, you also, it's tough, I mean, it's very, very expensive, because you have a lot of work in your building department.
And that, that's why those aren't included in the package, why we're very specific here, that's going to require a lot of thought as to how that will work, and then trying to figure out the fiscal impacts and the staffing demands related to those.
Exactly, exactly, that's.
I've also had a question raised, if the county will do anything to prevent someone from rebuilding a house in an area that is high fire dangerous, upper Matilla Hall Canyon, and I know from the experience with the city of Thousand Oaks, when the Razznell property burned on the top of the hill, there was, you know, a discussion, is there, are we going to allow them to rebuild, but I just couldn't see how you could not, but I don't know if that will be something that the planning department will consider, or that's just off the table.
As the code reads today, we would be required, it is a ministerial permit, and we would require to issue the permit, there isn't anything in there that contemplates a review of a high-fire hazard area. The only thing that might be would be the safety of the structure that we talked about earlier.
Right.
Mike?
Just one note on that, too, we've been trying to work very closely with the cities, so that, you know, from the citizen's standpoint, it's local government, whether it's city and county, so we'll also coordinate with the city of Ventura and San Pol and Ojai to just get a sense of where they are in terms of, you know, expediting and fee waivers and that kind of thing. And to your point, Supervisor, we'll never scrimp on the safety piece, but we are, I think the staff gets it, that let's be flexible, and I think they're just exercising their great judgment, so, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So, we have a, this requires a motion.
Yep.
We have a first and a second. Vote, please, Kelly?
Vote.
Thank you. Okay. So, now we're to item 10.
Yeah, Chair, Board members, I'm Mr. Powers, I'm Bill Stratton with the Environmental Health Division. The item before you is, has to do with an adoption of an emergency ordinance to establish a local debris removal program in the unincorporated area. It's also to authorize implementation of the Cal OES consolidated debris removal program. And third, it's authorizing the county executive officer with review and approval from county council to execute any agreements or documents in order to participate in that program. The recommended action, as you can see, is adopt an emergency ordinance, which we've attached as Exhibit One, and I'll talk about the specifics of that ordinance in just a minute. Authorize the implementation of the Cal OES program, and then authorize the executive officer to, with county council's review, to execute any agreements to participate in that program. As I mentioned before, on December 8, Dr. Levin declared a local health emergency dealing with the fire debris, and specifically those potentially hazardous substances that are associated when a house is destroyed by fire. And that declaration allowed a couple of different things. One, it allowed, like I mentioned before, DTSC to come in and conduct their Phase One Household Hazardous Waste Removal Program. And also, at the same time, we submitted a request through OES to participate in what's called the Phase Two Debris Removal Program. And what that will allow is, is through OES and Cal Recycle, is to have them come down and begin a debris removal program from those properties where structures were destroyed and damaged on the property. There's two options under this Phase Two. The first is the state-sponsored debris removal program. And as you've heard before, there's a right-of-entry application form that's required for that state program. It puts the county through the Environmental Health Division as the prime administrator for reviewing and accepting those right-of-entry forms, excuse me. And also, the county's responsible for dealing with the insurance portion of that process as well. So, as you heard Eric mention, as part of that ROE application process, we asked for specific information about their insurance, and that documentation has to be submitted with that application form. And we're also responsible for being part of that unified command, the incident commands, we have to have staff out there, along with OES staff and Cal Recycle staff, to participate in that effort. So, that's the state-sponsored program. The other program, or the other option that's available is the Local Debris Removal Program. The ordinance that you have in front of you is to address that option as part of Phase Two. The state-sponsored program is voluntary, no, you don't have to sign up for that. You can choose to go out on your own, hire a contractor, and go through the debris removal process. So, the ordinance addresses that. And what the ordinance does is says, if you're going to opt out, if you will, of the state-sponsored program, you still have to meet those same requirements for debris removal as you would if you were in the state-sponsored program. So, you have to make sure any remaining hazardous waste is removed, you have to make sure any asbestos is tested and removed and handled appropriately. And as part of that opt-out application process, you have to provide certification that all of those various items have been met and certified that they've been met when you go through that, that opt-out portion. So, the ordinance that you have before you is to address the unincorporated area and just those individuals that choose not to participate in that, in that state program. Now, with the state program, there's an application process, there's a right-of-entry, there's the insurance component that goes along with that, there are a number of clauses in that, in that application, that right-of-entry, the ROE, that the homeowner's going to have to sign and submit that to us. One of the first things we have to do is review all of those applications, we have to make sure all the information they're providing is accurate and the APNs are correct in there compared to the addresses and all of that information. The second part of that is, once we receive those ROEs and we can approve those, then the state will come down and start doing a very aggressive outreach. So, the first thing we want to do is have these town hall meetings, we want to have these press releases, we want to get the information out and word out to property owners, if you want to participate in the state-sponsored program, the first step is to submit that ROE. So, it'll be a very aggressive program to do that. Cal OES, Cal Recycle will not come down and go on a property unless the Phase One portion has been completed by DTSC. So, it's a very, that's why we wanted to move very quickly, getting the Phase One completed, so that household hazardous waste screenings could be conducted. So, once that's done, then Cal Recycle will come out, they'll investigate and do an assessment on each of these properties, people that want to participate in the program. They'll do sketches, identify unique features on the property, and then they will get their teams in to start removing that debris. The debris is going to be associated with that house footprint, it's going to be the material that was burned for the structure itself. There will be some minor, or there could be some minor brush removal, and Eric can speak to this, but if they have leaners, if they have branches, that could jeopardize Cal Recycle contractors coming in and removing this debris, then those trees will be removed. Generally, they're not going to go out and do brush removal, but if it impacts their debris removal process, those dangerous, if you will, trees, the leaners, will be removed as part of that process.
While you're on that part of the process, I mean, just, if you don't mind, so, I've asked about Creosote soaked railroad ties, a number of people with Creosote soaked railroad ties are the steps leading up to their house they burned. I don't expect you to have to have the answer right now, but that's one we're going to have to get an answer to, or do you know?
We will have to get an answer to that, and part of the assessment that Cal Recycle's going to do when they come out and before they remove, they're going to identify what all material's going to be removed from that property.
Okay.
I will tell you, based on my. I will tell you, based on my conversations with, with Eric and, and his staff, it generally removes, includes removing the, the slab, the foundation for these, which may include the steps leading up to that as well. But we will, we will know that, the answer to that question as we, as we move forward with the assessment.
Okay. Tree stumps then would not be removed, and trees would not be removed unless they are actually threatening the removal process, but property owners are gonna have to do that on their own.
That's correct, yes. And any, and to go back to your previous question, any other brush that may be around the property would be the property owner's responsibility.
A home partially damaged but not needing significant, you know, Phase 2 debris removal. If, if what was damaged was all the landscaping in their front yard and their steps and that kind of stuff, but the, but the house is still standing and still being occupied, would they, would this, would this debris removal program even affect them?
It, it may not, and, and if you've lost your house, it's damaged, destroyed.
Affect you.
It would affect you. There are some ineligible properties or properties that just won't apply. And what I understand, and Eric perhaps can jump in here, if it's just a partially damaged structure, it typically wouldn't qualify for the Phase 2 portion of it.
Their deck, their deck got burned and the steps got burned, but the house is fine. That would not be likely. Eric, could you answer, is that, would that be a house that would not qualify for this program?
Yeah, I can actually address a couple of different questions. Our program is only gonna be for those homes that are completely destroyed or where there may just be one wall standing. If the home itself was not destroyed, but landscape and other material around the home was, that'll be responsibility of the homeowner to address that.
Thank you.
To the question of railroad ties that came up earlier, we deal with this a lot. Unless we're talking about somebody who collected railroad ties and we've got a, you know, a hundred or more sitting on a parcel, that would be something we'd have to handle in a, in a special manner. But otherwise, if we're just talking about decorative railroad ties or something that was used for retaining wall or maybe for steps, those will be cleaned up as part of the overall cleanup. We will come in and we will remove all of the ash and debris that makes up the, the footprint of the home. So sometimes that spreads a little bit. We're gonna clean up all the ash, all the debris, and also remove the foundations and footing walls that were in place from the home. If there's landscaping material, if there's other debris outside of the footprint of, of what was the home, we won't be removing that. Terms of stumps and so forth, other trees and vegetation, other parts of the property, as we said, if it's not an immediate hazard to the cleanup crews, then those will be, those will be left, and that'd be the responsibility of the homeowner to clean up.
I didn't quite, I, I thought I heard two different things, I wanna be clear on the railroad ties. So on the railroad ties, you said if they're burnt railroad ties, I thought I heard you implied that they would normally be removed?
Yeah, normally, we normally would be removing those.
Unless there's a hundred, you know, unless it's a.
Yeah. You say you normally would or normally would not?
We normally would, that, that would be part of the debris that we would collect and remove. The only exception would be, and we've run into this a couple of times, where we've got somebody that either has a business on their property with the railroad ties, or they collect them and we've got just a huge collection of them. But if we're just talking a handful of railroad ties that are being used for steps or landscaping, those will all be removed as part of the, as part of the cleanup. Again, if they're right there in the, in the footprint of the home.
Yeah, thank you.
Good.
And so, part of that option, too, so those individuals that choose not to participate in the state program, there's an application process they go through as well, and that would be processed through the Environmental Health Division. Those would be for unincorporated area only. The city of Ventura will have to figure out a program or procedures for residents within the city limits that want to opt out of that, that state program as well. And we've shared our board letter and our draft ordinance with, with them as well.
And I'm sorry to ask so many questions today, but I have so many questions coming from the residents, but just want to be, this part of the program, the city, the county will be coordinating it for city properties as well as county unincorporated properties, correct?
For the administrative part of it, for the ROE, the right-of-entry application process, review process, the insurance part of it, the county will be involved with that. They prefer, they, OES and Cal Recycle prefer to work with one agency to process those ROE applications, so we will do that.
Okay.
Not, but we will not be involved with those folks that opt out within the city limits that choose to not participate in the state program.
That's a helpful distinction, thank you.
How do you plan to deal with the staffing of that for yourself?
That's, that's a very good question. For Phase 1, we needed to have a staff member embedded with, with each of those teams when they go out and do the properties. For Phase 2, we just have to be at the Incident Command Center. So we'll have two to three staff there, eight to five, Monday through Friday, and eight to one, I believe it is, on Saturdays. So that's our, our staffing responsibilities, at least for the Incident Command. In terms of reviewing those applications, I've had a number of former employees who have retired and have volunteered to come back and help us out in that process as well. And, and we have staff that are gonna be at our public counter and perhaps at the city if they have a, a location that we can answer questions and intake those applications at that time.
Yeah, yeah, I would just add to that, Mr. Stevens and I have spoken, I made it very clear to him that if he needs additional staff, he'll get it, and we want to make sure he has that resource available.
Yeah.
Here comes a request.
Walk right into that one.
No, one, one thing that I would mention, because as, as Bill said, we, the, the preferences for one entity to take responsibility for, even in the city and the county, one of the things that, as we note there, we need agreements in place to move forward, implementation. We, we feel we will need some sort of agreement with the city, be it an MOU or something, that kind of outlines shared responsibilities. In fact, city staff might be able to assist, and then of course, costs and what have you. So that's just an example of one of the documents that we're gonna have to.
Exactly, and some shared cost potentially, yes.
Did you hear that, Barry? Okay.
Mr. Fisher's nodding his head.
Well, and, as we went through this Phase 1 process, and I did meet with Tully and I met with his staff and, and city staff, and we have talked about shared responsibilities and either, even with county staff, IWMD, Building and Safety Staff, and pulling in those resources and, and assist us when we're reviewing those applications. Because Cal OES and, and Cal Recycle want to have a start date, and they want to have an end date. And so it's very important that we get the word out, we get folks that want to participate in this program, to submit those applications in a timely manner.
You know, that, that's a good point, 'cause I was just thinking as you're talking, if I'm gonna wait six months to think about this, or, I mean, what is it, Eric or you, what, what is, what is your timeframe? Because at what point?
Usually, it's what, our, our initial discussion with OES and Cal Recycle was to make this signup period a matter of just weeks.
Oh.
Two to three weeks, maybe four weeks. It depends on the start time for when Cal Recycle can come down and get started. We understand that those applications may dribble in, but we really need to get a, a firm date when you need to have those applications turned in, because they're gonna marshal fifty to, fifty crews down here to, to start removing debris, and it's a huge construction project. So it, it needs a start and an end date. And with Santa Barbara and some of these other counties, we, we don't want to lose our place in lines, we want to make sure that we're.
So how, how do we deal with the idea that, you know, Steve Bennett has a rental home and he lives in Indiana and it burned down, and he doesn't hear this kind of stuff? Are we contacting him in Indiana to let him know, like, he's just, you know, been renting it for the last 20 years, somebody, or how do we deal with that?
That's a great question, and that'll all be part of that aggressive outreach and messaging that, that we're gonna put together and, and when we meet with Cal Recycle. They've obviously gone through this in Northern California, and so hopefully they have some tips that we can use to contact perhaps the out-of-state owners. Or maybe they have representatives that, that.
Yeah, well, yeah.
With as well.
Probably something, but I'm just trying to think of, because it's limited on that time and to manage that, so, yeah. Okay.
And then finally, I won't go into a lot of details here, but there's the fiscal portion of this that we, we touched on before. And pages three through five in here talks about the cost sharing and the different scenarios if, and Chris mentioned, if the feds, FEMA get involved with this and the county's costs can be reduced through that process. There's also that insurance provision that's, that's in there as well. It's gonna be the county's responsibility after construction is completed to, to deal with, with that portion of it. The, the range, you see in the board letter, goes from a little over a million to four million. And that depends on whether or not FEMA comes in and pays that 75% of our, 25% are, as I say, the county's responsibility here. And this is only for the county unincorporated. The city's gonna deal with their own financial issues for those properties within the city limits, so.
If FEMA, let me just ask real quick, if FEMA does something, it's gonna be for the whole fire, it's not gonna just be for county, it'll be for county, city?
I, I'm, yes, I'm, yes. I, I'll say yes, 'cause I'm presuming the city will participate in this program as well.
Yeah, the event is considered the wind and the fires, is that what it is?
Correct.
On this funding portion, just to look at the cost benefit, we wanted your board to be aware of the potential fiscal impact. As you heard, if the federal major disaster comes through, that will pay roughly 19% of that, 25%, it'll still be a net cost, but much more favorable. But you've heard already the many benefits of this program. One of the things, too, is if we didn't do this, then folks would go on their own, and a lot of them would do it, but we're concerned that some of them might not, and we've heard the situation in other counties. Then the county, if the onus is on the county and then, like, the city and their jurisdictions to go in and abate that public nuisance, there's a cost to that, then lien the property and hope to recover that someday. So there's also, I mean, from a cost benefit analysis, we really think it makes sense overall to move forward.
And, and, thank you, Mr. Powers. There's a provision in the ordinance for the county unincorporated area that talks about enforcement and summary abatement, because if these properties have not been cleaned up after a certain period of time, then, then we're gonna declare those a public nuisance. And then the county can start summary abatement. There is an appeal process, but it is a number of provisions that we put in the ordinance to address those, those exact situations. The foundation for this is the public health declaration. That's what's the, the driving force behind here. That's why we have to put timeframes in on when these properties have to be cleaned up.
Okay. And did Santa Rosa already get everything they needed from the feds on this now, or not?
Santa, I've been talking to my counterpart quite, quite a bit in, in Santa Rosa, and it was a little different there in that we're gonna be dealing with OES and Cal Recycle up in Santa Rosa because of the, just the size of that disaster. Army Corps of Engineer came in and started doing the debris removal portion, and I think it has caused it to, to go on quite, quite a bit longer, in, in their opinion. So I think we're fortunate in that Cal Recycle, I think I said that politically correct enough. I think we're fortunate to have OES and Cal Recycle coming down and being, and being involved with this.
So I, I guess what I was wondering is, the declaration piece, did, did they get that up there?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
And really, that's a key component to starting this whole process, is putting that public health declaration in place, because that then allows the Phase 1, it allows us to participate in the Phase 2 as well.
And just one more, that, had a note there, is it's a voluntary program, but as we understand it, it's a norm, roughly 90% of the property owners selected it.
Okay, that's.
Really seem to make, they're projecting, I think, 80% here, but that could be, that could be conservative. And just one last note, and Cal Recycle, they have been so responsive. DTSC, Cal Recycle, just really on it, so.
Will, will there be an opportunity for people to do all of this registration online, or will this all have to be by paper form?
Our plan is to have the forms available, so you can, you can fill them out online, but there, you'll have to print them out and then submit them to centers that we might, will have available for them to do that, either, either here, here at the county or the city.
And you alluded to that, I was gonna ask the question, I know there was frustration up in Santa Rosa with the Army Corps in terms of the timing of the removal, but will we, when we finally get all the contracts done, et cetera, will we be able to give people the bracketed timeframes that we think that debris removal will take place within?
Yes. In our early discussions with, with Cal Recycle and OES, there, we were working at, looking at a timeframe of, of the middle of January and ending sometime in March. So there is a beginning and ending date. It's sliding a bit, and we still haven't worked out some of those details, but there is a start and an end date as far as they're concerned.
Okay. I guess it's, it's influenced by weather, of course, also.
Yes, absolutely. And, and, you know, in the city, they can go much quicker versus out in the county unincorporated areas where you have more travel time and distances.
And then, you know, getting, getting the federal declarations would be extremely valuable for the, for the county, and so anything and everything that we all need to do to try to help make that happen, of course, you know, let, let us know what.
I did want to follow up on a question Supervisor Bennett had. When Cal Recycle completely removes all the debris slabs or whatever, they will put that soil erosion control material on, same that Mr. Fisher was talking about. It's, it's, they're not gonna do any grading and it's not gonna be kind of minimal erosion control is what they're gonna do when they leave that site.
And, and my final comment, just so I can get this said before we, we finish all of this, and that is that, you know, our, our fire chief started this off by talking about the fact that we, as elected officials, should be proud of that emergency response. And I think all the way from those first few hours when the sheriff and the fire chief literally had to work and make real professional decisions to evacuate quickly, all the way to now where we are with this recovery and all of the, you see how complex the question, you know, the details are, et cetera. I am proud to be a Ventura County Supervisor, and so to all of you from top to bottom, this is the most remarkable thing I've seen in our county, too, in 16 years I've been here. And, you know, we oftentimes talk about the mission, and this is part of the mission, is to, to be the local government that is responsive and proactive in an emergency like this. And you were proactive to save people's lives, and you guys are proactive in terms of rebuilding people's lives, and it's, it's, it is something to be proud about. So I hope you guys are all proud of being part of this also. Thank you.
Yeah, and just real quick, Bill, I know Eric wanted to talk on this debris. Eric, do you have some more things you want to add to this?
Uh, no, I think just, you know, certainly echoing the supervisor's comments a moment ago, you know, we, our job at the state level is to support local governments. Our job is made far easier, especially in the recovery phase, when we have local governments that are moving quickly, while we're in the middle of response phase, to begin setting up those critical recovery components, and that was certainly the case in Ventura County and the city of Ventura as well. The local public health emergency puts a, puts a, puts a measure of urgency to everybody's work. We've certainly been operating to, to, to move with urgency at the, at the city and county's direction. We've talked about the DTSC work, we're prepared to mobilize quickly with the Cal Recycle team. Our initial goal, which we'll continue to work with the city and the county on, was we wanted to have boots on the ground beginning the Phase 2 cleanup work on January 15th. That's a very aggressive target, but it's critically important with the public health emergency in place that we move rapidly to educate the public over the, over the next couple of weeks on what the program's about, answer any and all questions. We've taken some actions already in that regard, the frequently asked questions document that the city and the county have that we can begin advertising to the public. We've got a very quick, two-page eligibility checklist for folks to understand what's eligible and what's not in the program. We'll continue to, to move with urgency. Cal Recycle is working on executing a contract right now for the primary contractor that would execute the project in Ventura County. One of the requirements will be that they work to utilize local contractors to the extent we can for a lot of the subcontractor responsibilities in the project. Throughout this, it'll be done in partnership, in a unified partnership. Assuming we have authorization from both the city and the county to, to move forward this week, we're gonna be setting up a unified command structure similar to what you saw in the firefight response with our brothers and sisters in the fire community and law enforcement community will be unified. Cal Recycle, the city and the county working together to set priorities, identify critical areas that we need to get to first. Those might be critical watershed risks, those might be properties that, that are a risk to other public infrastructure, could be properties that we want to get cleaned up that are immediately adjacent to homes that weren't lost. And so there'll be a unified coordinating group that'll be set up with the city, county, and the state to look at those critical priorities and drive the, drive the, the project accordingly. And. And, you know, the last thing I'll offer is that we have been doing this program for the better part of ten years. CalRecycle does a phenomenal job with the structure they bring to your community, with the integration they do. We're already in the process of setting up our disaster debris recovery operations center in the city of Ventura, which will not only be a base of operations for us, but also be a location that the public can go to to get questions answered and have communication with folks on our operations teams. We're in the process of doing that now. We had staff from our debris program in Ventura late last week doing assessments of the properties and looking at the areas that need to be cleaned up, so we can start identifying what things we need to do tactically and be prepared to do tactically to be able to hit the ground running and get this project done quickly. So again, I appreciate your indulgence, letting me call in this morning. We have in the audience with you today, our regional administrator, Mona Vanti, who'll be happy to stay behind and capture any additional questions that I'm not able to answer and get answers back to your team as quickly as possible on all that, so thank you very much.
Well, Eric, we appreciate you being on the call today, and we really appreciate the response and the activities and all that you're doing for the county here. You know, this is, we're used to disasters, but I don't think we're ever used to this kind of disaster. So we really appreciate all that you're doing for us and look forward to some great success. And thank you to all the people, the team, everybody who's been here today to talk about and where we're going and just, you know, it's when you squeeze the situations, you see how people respond. And as Steve said, we've got great people who've been well-trained, and this board who's given the resources to make sure they're trained. And I do appreciate you doing all the work you did, because now it pays off and we see it. And thank you to all the departments and all the first responders who've done so much for the people. And now, the other side of it, they're going to have to respond over the next months and years to come, but this is not going to be a quick process, and, but I appreciate that. And Mike and all that, what your team has done, and people willing to step up, so...
Thank you, board members, and just, as you mentioned so before, thank you for your support, because to move quickly, we've had to sort of hang it out there a little bit sometimes.
Yeah.
Knowing that you've got, you know, we've got your support really helps us to do that, gives us the confidence to do that, so we really appreciate it. Quick note to IT, those websites went up, and they're very user-friendly and I think really helped, and they're really highly professional, excellent sites. EHD, environmental health, just really unsung heroes, or some of their team are here today, round the clock, helping make this happen, because they are administering this both for the county and the cities as well. And as you mentioned, CalOES has just been an amazing, great partner, so thank you.
No, I do, and there's only one other thing, I even thought about this now that he brings that number, and I've asked Mr. Powers about it earlier, but Harrisons in this area, they've got so many bins. I've talked to Waste Management, and they're bringing more bins into the county, but this is going to go quick. I mean, do we have to open up opportunities for other people to bring things to help with this debris removal that, you know, you'd only have so many of those big bins that are out there?
Part of, CalRecycle and their prime contractor will be to put all of those subcontracts in place.
Okay.
To make sure that they do have the resources, the bins, that are available for the duration of this project.
Yeah, yeah, and I know the Waste...
And if I could...
Go ahead.
If I could maybe speak to that, the way this project will work tactically is, we don't use the bins. What we do is we require dump trucks that are fully lined, and so all of the ash and material will go into a dump truck that's been lined. That ash and debris will be done, we will conduct what's called a burrito wrap to that, so that as that material travels through the city of Ventura and the county of Ventura, all that material is contained all the way to the landfill. One of the critical requirements of our project is that we mitigate the ash and debris on-site at the work site, that there's air monitoring done at the work site, there's community air monitoring done through our haul routes, and that we take every precaution necessary in wrapping the debris, so that there's no debris flowing through that neighborhood or through the community. So that'll actually be the way in which we'll collect the material. There'll be dump trucks that'll go to the home site, they'll be filled, they'll be wrapped, and they'll go direct to the landfill.
So if any homeowners are listening and thinking about doing this themselves, just think of that precaution already that's being done by the state, and I think you see one of the great advantages of going with that coordinated program.
Well, Eric, that's, that's exciting to hear what you've done, because I'm sure people are thinking about all that as they're digging up and transporting all that ash and the else, so you guys really have it down, so I think that's great. We got a real question from our legal counsel.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chair, I just want to clarify, because we have moved very quickly with all of this.
Yeah.
A lot of it is conceptual in a way, and part of that action is to give discretion to enter documents and to authorize implementation. And I just want to, you know, there should be some parameters on what the board is delegating to us, and I just want to express what my understanding is, in that by authorizing implementation, the county is agreeing to pay up to twenty-five percent of the cost of the program. And to enter these ROEs, these right-of-entries, which are effectively contracts between the county and the landowners, and today I heard for the first time, the county will enter these for all the homes, including the city areas. It's the county's responsibility then to collect these insurance proceeds, because the homeowners will be assigning their rights to the county, and that's just the big job. So I don't know if Mr. Stratton will need more staff, but, you know, over time, that's a big commitment. So those are probably the two primary things that I see now, is when we say go, we're going to implement, we're agreeing to pay up to twenty-five percent, maybe less later.
But that's the max?
That's the max, as I understand it, and, you know, I would like some kind of MOU with, oh, yeah, so far, everything's been secondhand verbal.
Okay.
But that's the county exposure and the ROE program.
If I could just jump in, as I mentioned earlier, and I think we've indicated in today's discussion, there are probably as many questions as are answers. We think we have a good, as Leroy says, kind of conceptual handle on the program. There's a lot of details that need to be worked out, and that was really the genesis of the recommendation, was we need to review those, make sure kind of council's comfortable with those before we move forward. But Leroy made a very good point, which is that the potential fiscal costs to the county are somewhere in probably that four million dollar range just for that program. As I mentioned in the board letter, that didn't include the administrative costs associated with staffing to collect the insurance and what have you. So as we get more questions answered, we'll be able to firm that up for the board down the road. But at least conceptually, we feel those numbers are pretty good, and the program itself, as described, and as you heard from the insurance commissioner, looks like a very good program, and something we want to encourage the residents to participate in. So that's why we're here today.
And certainly, we want to encourage, and I know Steph's going to do this, is try to make sure that the contract is as favorable as possible to the homeowners in terms of making sure that we're only going to be collecting from the insurance part of it that is designated for removal. And then, of course, with the contract, so, yes, we are trusting our county council and our CEO to get this right, and then, of course, the city, this is only for the unincorporated properties, and we're not taking on that liability for the city properties, right?
Leroy, is that, you're pretty good with what you're...
Well, that's pretty good, but I think there's some discussion to go on with what these ROEs say. I mean, I'm not sure about, we're only going to collect if there's a specific debris removal clause. I, you know, that's part of the issue that has to be worked out, but...
Eric, do you have any comments on that at all?
I'm sorry, would you mind repeating the question?
Well, I was just, I didn't know if you heard what he was talking, what our county council, Leroy Smith, was talking about, I didn't know if you had any comments on collecting and what's happened in the past and...
Yeah, this is the... On the insurance collection?
Yes.
What we've seen on the last two significant fires that we did in Lake County and Calaveras County, it generally, kind of on average, we've seen about forty percent insurance collected, sometimes about fifteen thousand dollars per lot. The way the regulations are currently written, those insurance proceeds, if we're successful in getting a major presidential disaster declaration, those proceeds have to go back to the federal government. If we are unsuccessful, then those proceeds would have to go back to state government.
What about...
So we collect them? This is Leroy Smith, the county council, but my point was that there's an obligation to try to collect even on policies that do not have a discrete debris removal clause. Correct?
So if we have properties that don't have a discrete removal clause, generally debris is captured as part of their overall insurance policy, and in those cases, we won't look to collect until after they have concluded their rebuild.
I know, but at some point, you will look to collect. That's, I just want to make sure we all understand that.
Right, but if after they've done their rebuild, there's no longer any proceeds available for debris, then there won't be anything for us to collect. We're going to, we want the county to make every attempt they can, but at the end of the day, they've finished their rebuild, they've exhausted their insurance proceeds, we won't be looking to send them an extra bill for the proceeds.
The, you know, I would just add, not, this is an important discussion to have, but the recommendation, the wording was such that in order to implement, there are agreements that are required. The right-of-entry agreement is one of those agreements that county council will need to review, and we're going to have to get that at a level that county council's comfortable with and that the CEO is comfortable with before we proceed. So this is just one of those agreements. As I mentioned, others that we think we're going to need in place, but this is a subject of future discussion, clearly, with county council as well as the state and the CEO's office.
And that's part of that broad approval you're talking about today.
Right.
Linda?
I just want to emphasize the need to do things concurrently, and so often, there's many steps involved in all of this, and many different agencies, all the way up to the Army Corps and all that, but to whatever extent all of our different departments and agencies can, and doing things concurrently will help that things move faster, and I'm, we're all so very pleased that we have moved as fast as we have, and just give encouragement to continue that.
Good, all right, I appreciate that. Jeff, do you have anything on any of this stuff? You good? Okay. All right, so Eric, we're going to vote on this, do you have any other comment you wanted to make at all? You good?
I'm good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Kelly? All right, so we'll vote, we have a first and a second?
Supervisor Long has a question.
What'd she say?
She has a question.
You have a question, go ahead, supervisor.
Yes, all right, thank you. Supervisor Phil, I really appreciate you asking about the contact information. In the town hall meetings that I've been to, I've had several owners tell me that they, based on the file, they'll be out of town for a month or so, and the question to them was, how will they get contacted, and how can our office help them with that? So I did ask Matt Carroll to provide us with a list of those in our district, so that we can help in notifying our constituents that have been affected, what the steps are and so forth. So I appreciate the information online as well. The question I had is, our agriculture commissioner just put out a report for, or a request for the USDA, we have over ten thousand row crop lands and sixty thousand acres of grazing, and however, those properties have homes and barns and so forth. So is CalOES able to help them with that, or do they, just for my clarification and how you've worked with Sonoma, how does that work for these farmers and so forth?
On our cleanup project, any property that we're cleaning up, if there's outbuildings on that property that are more than a hundred and twenty square feet in size, we'll clean up those outbuildings as well. So in the past, that's included barns or other buildings on the particular properties.
Okay, so then trees and so forth, that they have to deal with, with the USDA and so forth. Okay, great, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, we need a vote, everybody voted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, are we done? Okay, well, that's it, I appreciate everybody showing up, Eric, I appreciate you coming online, and everybody on the day after Christmas, and thank you for being here, but it's very important we're here. And again, thank you for all the successes, and we look forward to the future successes in this disaster we have. So thank you, and we'll adjourn.